All right, so I'd like to call to order the October seventeenth meeting of the Village of Cold Springs on the Board of Appeals. I'm Aram Wolf, I'm the Chair. We also have on the Board Grace Low, Donald McDonald, Eric Worth, all here, and John Martin should be here in the next ten minutes or so. We are unpaid volunteers, we're residents of the village, and we're appointed by the Village Board of Trustees. Michael Mel is our videographer and Board Secretary. So we've got two main purposes in village governance. One is to grant or deny variances on requests by property owners, and that's almost all of what we do. That's what everybody here tonight is here for. The second one is we can interpret zoning codes if there's a difference of opinion between a building inspector and a property owner. Okay, so we've got a few things on the agenda. We have addresses even in my mind. Forty-one Garden Street. I think we'll do that one first, if that's okay with everybody. You said yes first, that you would be here, so...
So that's how it was started?
It's a first come, first served situation.
Yep, so first on.
So you've got a lot coverage area variance request, and then we have Jeff of... State your address.
Twelve Benedict Road.
Twelve Benedict Road for a setback for a new deck, or expanded deck or something. Then we have, we will continue to review the application documents that we started on at our last meeting, and discuss our, discuss the situation with the lack of enforcement with our buildings, but we don't want to make any kind of statement or anything about that to the Village Board. And that will be it for tonight. So Karen and...
Hi.
Maria.
Maria, come on up, please. So as you know, we're not here tonight at the workshop to discuss the merits of your application, we just want to make sure it's complete and that everything is set to go. So we've got the referral from Jeff, we have the deed, we have an application, conveniently showed by you, thank you very much. All right, so you, Jeff says that you had made your escrow payment and the deposit and the application fee. So why don't you tell us what this is about, and I'll make sure that we've got everything ready for publication.
Okay. My name's Karen Parks, I'm here representing Maria and Tony DeMayo of forty-one Garden Street. Maria is a homeowner, and our proposal is for a requested variance for lot coverage. We're proposing to add a small one-story addition to an existing one-story single-family residence that's in the R1 district. And the existing buildings on the property already exceed the lot coverage. There is a pre-existing non-conforming lot coverage of thirty-five point one percent. So basically, any one-story addition that we would propose would require a variance for lot coverage. So with our proposed addition, our lot coverage will increase to forty point seven percent, and the allowed lot coverage is thirty percent. So we're requesting a variance of ten point seven percent for lot coverage. All of our other bulk standards are met, we're within our setbacks, within the height requirement, and so the only variance that is being requested is the lot coverage. And we will also be, be some historic review board for a certificate of appropriateness. And one of the reasons that we aren't pursuing a second-story addition versus a one-story addition to eliminate the need for this variance is because we don't feel it's appropriate aesthetically for the house, and feel it will stray from the design standards. It's basically a nineteen-sixties brick ranch, and so we felt the best way to achieve the additional space that we're looking to gain would be through expanding the L1 story addition, and that would be more appropriate for the style of the building. And also, the primary goal to the addition is to actually add some accessible space and an accessible first-floor bathroom, as well as expanding the living space within the first floor. So that is essentially our application, and...
Okay, this is the brick house right next to the Loretto parking lot.
Correct.
Okay. Looking at the list of neighbors. Three, three, Papa Church, Papa Irons, and the rest, Kings.
And there's a map, a tags map is attached, so you can see the properties that are listed.
Those, those all look good to me. I don't, I don't know that we need to notify anybody further than that. Can't see, can't see it across from northern, and there's a big parking lot there anyway. Does everybody, does everybody feel about that? Looks complete to me.
And so the list of neighbors is sufficient?
Yep, that's good. I think this is, this is all pretty straightforward, does anyone have any questions? Yeah, there's no questions.
Sometimes they're so nice and clear.
Let's give John a few minutes to catch up. So this is the, this is the brick house next to the Loretto parking lot, and they're proposing a small one-story addition in the back of the house that will increase the non-conformity of the lot coverage. So while he, while John's looking...
Can I ask a quick, like, with regards to, like, you know, photographs or seeing, like, what the density would be like?
That would be a good thing to bring to the public hearing.
And maybe an overview of what the neighborhood looks like from a satellite type, just to get an idea of the density and...
I think that the density is going to be an important question to look at, and it's, you know, you're between a large parking lot and then a corner lot, so it'd be good to see how this fits in.
Is this the property to the north or the south of the park?
The north.
The north.
Okay.
It's a brick branch, right next to the parking lot, so...
When you're basketball.
Yeah. So in aerial, like a Google Earth type photo, and then, as well as photos just of the neighboring property, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, we did something similar to that when we were working with the yellow house that goes on the other side on Fair Street, but to the south side of Church, Loretto. There was a, an extension that was put to the back of that private residence.
Oh, yeah. So what will happen is, I think we're all in agreement, you can come to, we can have a public hearing at our next meeting, which is going to be the first Thursday in November. And that date is... And I will send out instructions on, I'm sure you're familiar, Karen, but I'll send them out anyway, the instructions on what to do. We now have public hearing signs, I think you might have gone through that once. So that will all be explained, and then I will send you a notice that you send out to all of the, your neighbors, and save the receipts, that's the important part, not necessarily the cards to get returned. Um, whoops, just to confirm the date. It's going to be November seventh. Everybody think that far ahead? I can barely think that far ahead, but I will, I'm sure over here.
I think we have the next round week this month, which means it seems a long way forward.
Is that good for everybody? Yes, okay. So we'll have at least three people.
I might not be able to come.
Okay.
Got something in the city.
So we've got, I can be here, Eric, Grace.
Yeah, I imagine I could be here, yeah. I'm usually always here, except for a certain portion.
All right, so we'll, we'll plan on that. Can I have a motion to move this to a public hearing on November seventh, please?
I move to move this application here, and DeMayo's to a public hearing for November seventh.
I second the motion.
All in favor? All right. Great. We'll see you in three weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Great, to keep you so organized. Two weeks from now. I want to send it, you're welcome to, of course, keep your copy. Here. All right, Jeff.
All right, thanks everyone for your time.
Thank you for applying for variance instead of just doing it. All right, so we have...
I can guarantee my head, I think it's not as neat as Karen's.
She's a professional. Okay, this is the application list, here's the application.
I think I've worked on these drawings.
What's that?
I've worked on these drawings, actually.
You did?
Yeah.
For a lot?
Yeah. Does that...
Not any good?
There's just a few hours here and there.
Is this just a larger version of the small one, Grace?
I didn't see all the pages.
Jeff, is this just a larger version?
I believe, I believe so, I can't, if you want me to take a look at it.
It looks like it to me.
It's L101, it should be.
She's C100. Okay, if anyone wants a larger copy, I've got those here. So Grace, I guess if you worked on this, you'd...
It was a while ago.
Not have anything to do with it.
Is it the same thing? It's not the same thing, no?
So...
This, this is a larger property.
Yes.
That's what I was saying.
I don't think so.
No?
No.
There's two parts to the project.
Yes.
One is the material, which is done, we've got the C100, and then this is just the outside.
Here.
Oh, there's a different one, I'm sorry, I thought it was just one, where the process...
Uh, so I think there's, there's two sheets, the C100 and the L101.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. Um, and...
Yeah, I think there's only, there we go.
I think the village should hire Karen to organize everybody's applications.
Pretty amazing, I make checks.
See, you already have that one, but you don't have this one. Which one do you mean?
The L101.
And John...
He's got the big version in that.
And I got this, this one too, that's what I have.
Do you have a C or the L?
I have the...
The C.
All right.
That's the C101.
Okay. Do we supply enough documents?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the list of neighbors, have you read it out? Is that in the application?
It should be in the application list. Alberto, and Mary Jean Ruiz, and George and Jane, Ballstitch, and then Ballstitch, sorry. So across the street from us is Mary Joy. This is something in the backyard, but I could certainly list her name, I don't know her last name or anything.
It wouldn't hurt, I mean, if it's not going to be visible to them, then, and the only part we're really concerned about is the deck that's in your setback. Your, so your backyard faces woods, right?
Yeah, it's the, there's a stream runoff, like, towards the foundry, so across the, across the, the, kind of, the, the stream is Joe Curdo also, I could list him. The back of his home faces the back of our home, he could...
Can you point out, you're not constitutionally...
Sure.
Point out to me which one is yours.
Oh yeah, uh, this one. So it's the second one off the corner, so this, they called the second, so that'd be Berdo and Mary Jean, that's George and Jane, this is Mary Joy. And then back over here, I think that's Joe Curdo's home.
Okay. Is that, that's, here the second one up, that's pretty far away, would he be able to see that? Would he be able to see it?
I mean, he may, I mean, I see his home, he sees my home.
All right, so what's...
I wouldn't mind...
There would also be activity going on, on the back porch.
Yeah, let's add him to the list.
I wouldn't mind adding him, he'd be fine, yeah.
So you've got your two next-door neighbors, your, your rear neighbor, and across the street.
Yeah, solid, so Mary Joy is across the street, and then Joe Curdo's behind us.
Okay, and you'll have the public hearing sign, I'm sure everybody will know about it.
Yeah.
On Monday morning.
So are you, are we, what are we, are we looking at what's in the red, is that what you're talking about for a variance?
Yeah, so...
That's what we're concerned about, the rest of this is all within the setback?
This is all, yeah, this is...
So that's the issue?
Yeah, there's three feet here, three extra feet for...
If I turn this upside down and oriented with the site plan, that's the same thing?
Exactly.
But enlarged?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what is this dimension here? It looks like five hundred fifty-nine feet seven inches?
Can I see that? I am guessing this is from curb? Wait, no, this is, okay, so this is, so this is where the home is, and this is a brick wall, five hundred fifty-nine, so this would be, I'm not sure, I don't...
Well, it, it looks like it's a wrong, I mean, it can't be five hundred and fifty-nine feet, right?
No, it can't be that.
All right, so that's something that you would have, whoever, whoever is your architect and quotes, you'd have them check that. The seventeen feet two, and then, I'm not sure what this dimension line here is actually going to. It's like right there?
Yeah.
What is that, is there a point there that's important? That point right there? I could see why this point would be important, but I don't know about that point.
No, I'm not sure.
All right, so I would circle that.
Yep, okay.
And then over here, original proposed extent of proposed new deck, I don't understand that. What does, what does that mean?
Yep, sure. Original proposed extent of the proposed new deck. Okay, so what she's saying is, we've had plans approved here that included a new deck on the back, and this was the original line, this first line here.
Yeah.
And then when we actually measured out, we kind of spray painted around, this looked really narrow from here to here.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm applying, my wife and I are applying for the variance to go out a little further. So this is the original approved line so far, we could build to this right now if we want, but before we start this, we just want to see if we could get a variance to go an extra three feet.
All right, you might rewrite that, rewrite that, because...
Was this an old variance?
No.
It's not even a variance requested, it's not even something that was approved, it's within their rights to build it as it is.
It was approved, it was originally approved.
For a building permit.
For a building permit.
Right, but it wasn't approved for a variance, approved by...
Yeah, it was approved within the bounds, so there was no approval of a variance, we never, we had, we hadn't requested a variance until then.
You hadn't needed one.
Right. So I, we could...
I would take those, that's all past history, that, it'd be one thing if you had a, if the, if the setback line was back here, and you had originally come to ZBIA and gotten a variance for that, and now you decided, you know what, we really want some more, but these are, this is like history, this down the road, under the bridge.
On the other hand...
Not relevant to what we're doing now, so it's confusing.
On the other hand, that is actually the setback line, and the setback, and it, and this is the version of the drawing that has the measurements on it, so it might be better just to finish this drawing with the full setback, so we can see, see where they are, and just remove this, and just call it the setback, because that's what it is.
That's right.
It's just a setback, just call it a setback, and be done with it.
Right, yeah, definitely. So, just say that again, finish the drawing with the full setback?
So, as you have on C100, we can see the setback right there.
Okay.
But this, maybe, maybe C100 has the measurements. I lost my large C100. Now, C100 doesn't have the measurements that we're interested in right here. So on either the, either L101 or C100, on C100 you would have to add the measurements, or on L101 you would need to mark the setback, so that we can fully grasp where...
This, this here is going to, in the middle of nowhere, this meaningless right there, so that should be made to what it suppo, something that means something. This isn't, it doesn't mean anything, that dimension right there.
Okay.
Is that a step or something?
Uh, I can't see from here.
Yeah, what that would be...
Well, the other one is to the, is, is scaling from the corner of the building.
I mean, to me, maybe it just looks like it's an incomplete line, but I can't be sure.
So it needs to be, they need to be cleaned up, that's what I think what I'm saying.
Okay.
They need to be cleaned up.
And the reason for that, it's not just because we're picky, but because this could be misinterpreted in the future, and someone's...
That's, that's your reason.
Oh, you've approved, you've approved my new thing, and my jig out to here already, so I don't need to...
That's fine.
...do anything.
So, clean up the drawing, so add the measurements to C100, and/or add the setback to L101, finish the drawings with the full setback. You're saying, remove all the old approved lines, because it doesn't matter?
No, we're, we're... They erased that.
Yep.
They erased that.
Yep.
And they call this line side yard setback. It's the rear, if it's a, it's a rear yard, whatever, whatever setback it is.
Okay.
Rear yard setback, they call it what it is. And then they would shade in this area here, and they would call that subject...
To variance.
...for a proposed, a proposed variance.
Okay.
And then we would, we would know...
Yeah, somebody came in off the street, and...
They would understand what the subject, what the issue is.
They're very clear.
Do you understand what the setbacks are?
And so, do I know the actual measurements?
Do you personally understand what the setbacks are?
Yes, yes. Like, do I understand the term setback?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Because what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say, instead of us drafting it for you, and you just carrying the information back to your draftsman, I'm trying to get you to understand it, so you can talk to them about it.
Yeah.
And what we're saying is, that we're trying to say to you, is that when you say, "original proposed extent of proposed new deck," that's like, it doesn't matter, we're just trying to have you label that as what it is, that line is the, is the rear yard setback.
That's clear.
That's all we're saying, that's all we're saying. Okay, and then, and then call out the, they could do a pattern or something to show...
So call out the setback, and then call out the variance for a request.
Right, and they would take those, original proposed extent of things out of there.
Yep.
And then they would make their dimension lines...
Accurate.
Mean what, you know, mean what, have some sense.
And I, I think you should go ahead, and on this map, as you're doing all of that, finish drawing the setbacks for the...
Finish drawing the setbacks on the side.
So we can see how the whole backyard fits in with the setback, side to, side yard setbacks also. Now, you already have that on C100, but this doesn't have the measurements, so I'm trying to bring those two things together, so that there's a complete picture on one.
Okay.
Are there similar, you know, decks around the neighborhood that you might be able to say, oh, this would change the character of the neighborhood, other people have decks similar, just that you're...
Yeah, no, as safe as this one will be, I can tell.
Yeah, no, that's one of the criteria that we look at, so I would agree, that would be, you know, potentially to your advantage, if you could point out what the neighborhood looks like surrounding you, especially in the backyards.
Yep, okay. Yeah, bringing pictures of the home from the outside, the exterior, what we're trying to accomplish. Yep, for sure.
Man, I don't think there's a need for, like, aerial or anything in this case, whereas the other case deals with what would be a much larger increase on the, you know, limits of an area variance.
Yeah.
Which, this wouldn't have as much of a bulk issue.
Yeah, I'm happy to pull those if we need them, whatever's going to make it, your decision is here.
Where's this, this says, on your extent of statement, you're saying, "are looking for a variance to extend the deck by three feet more feet," what does that say?
By three more feet.
Three more feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like me to edit that?
Well, I, I think that this is confusing right here, because I keep thinking that's a foot marker, that's more, okay.
Okay, I wrote that relatively quickly.
Right, right. Do we have a lot coverage, you know, a coverage, one of those things fell out, do we need it?
On the conformance sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, we should have that.
What is a lot coverage conformance sheet?
It's just, it's called a conformance sheet.
Example of this right here. Let's pack it up in the bag.
It's uncovered, right? This isn't a covered deck, right?
No, correct.
So it's not... So it's not, it hasn't been a lot covered, right? The only, the only thing we need to see there is the side yard, is the rear yard setback.
Right, yeah, I don't know what you did with the other one, it's somewhere in this packet, but no.
Right, the, the extent of the, of the, um-
What do you mean, you need to see the rear yard? So it's twenty feet from the property?
We have a worksheet that shows what is allowed for each setback and each, um, uh, each apartment of a, of a residential lot, and then we have what exist, there's a column for what exists and a column for what you're proposing, so that we can, we can see in numbers how much love changes.
Like percentage change or?
In this case, it would just be, you know, three feet on one end of a triangle.
Exactly.
So, that's, um, that's really the only thing that you need to-
That's something, is that online or you gave it to Jeff?
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. Uh, is this something, a document like a bull online to-
Yeah, I cannot.
So I can follow some-
And you just cross-relate it to, uh, your, uh, survey and, and you, you know, like, inside yard setbacks, I'm sure, it, this is just a normal size property, not narrow, so it'd be ten feet either side and twenty feet in the rear.
Exactly, that's exactly.
And twenty-five feet up front.
Yep. Okay.
So we would need the dimension from- It seems to me that this is, um, actually, the corner would be the new step, these are just steps, right? Right? The, the, this is new construction right here?
Yes, so the-
That's the deck, and these are steps?
Yes. So it's kind of stadium seating, there's not gonna be a railing, we're gonna grade up.
So, it would seem like this would be the closest point to the, to the property line.
Yes, correct.
So it would think that that would be where you would put, instead of they had that dimension, you would do this dimension, which is a couple inches shorter, seems to me.
Well, who do you think? If you were to measure this, right? Not this, but that?
Well, yeah, he'd go, they'd go from this corner right there to the property line, and that would be, that would be, tell us now, um, what the extent of the variance is gonna be. You'd have this dimension and then this dimension.
Right.
But not for, not from here, because here, the, the bitter end is right there, and that's where the, I think the, the, that's the new construction.
Right, so, I mean, we can calculate that, but it would be handy to have them both there.
Yep.
So the last, the edge of the bottom step.
Exactly, okay.
So, yeah, instead of, uh, instead of four foot four, what we really would want is this. That.
That dimension right there. That dimension.
What, why, what are you showing over here? I don't understand.
Give me another one.
Yeah, the corner.
We want this dimension.
Okay.
To the property line, correct?
This dimension, okay, 'cause this is where the setback is, so you-
And setback to the corner of your step.
Okay.
And then from there to the property line, with the dimension is-
Yep. So setback to the corner of the step, and then from there, the measurement to the property line?
I mean, since a picture speaks a thousand words, I mean, should we just, just do an aerial anyway?
Yeah.
Uh, just to-
I'm, I'm looking at it, and it's all covered by trees.
Okay, well, maybe we won't even leave any.
Yeah?
Seems like a lot of privacy. At least from, 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 from heaven down.
It's great location, I love it.
Trees, 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 and Airbnbs.
Oh.
Lot of oxygen there.
How much higher is the deck from the grave?
Uh, it'll meet whatever the code is, what's its, I think it's three, eighteen inches or thirty-six inches, uh, there's no deck right now.
Without a railing, I'm not sure.
Uh, we know, I don't, Laura knows the measurements of the builder.
That would be building code.
Yep, it'll follow what they know.
I just, I just wanted to know how much higher the, the floor of the deck was from-
And around below.
Uh, it's gonna be three feet or less.
Okay, and then, um, what's going on with the property right here?
Um, what is right here?
Yeah, is there, is there people living here?
No, no, this is the found, this is the back of the home, this is the founder. Uh, so the founder's down here, um, I forget what they're called, it's slipping my mind.
Drainage ditch.
Yeah, drainage ditch, thank you, there's a-
Okay.
The state has a, uh,
And that must be-
Those gold, those cement pipes, uh, cement stairs. Laura's losing me right now. An easement.
So they're in there.
State has an easement there for the drainage ditch.
This is their house, 'cause there's another house buried here, I think, on a, uh, and then this is the village dump, the leaf dump.
Okay.
Alright, and then the, the, the deck is gonna be on, on this, on this side?
Collection was today, no, it was yesterday.
Just to confirm, is your house the, this one or the one next to it, Jeff?
Um, we're this one right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so there is no house there?
No, this is, so this is, uh, Burdo's yard over here, this is the, uh, the corner, uh, garden dump.
Okay, so, so this is Jeff's house. That one right there, this one. Yeah. Where's the deck? The deck is gonna be by, under those trees. Alright. Okay. I'll just make sure everybody sees that. Jeff's house, right there.
And he backs up on the big drainage ditch that you can see from Curdo's and everybody else's, that middle part.
It's this one right here.
Just from Curdo's, we don't really, 'cause the Putnam Historical Society's there, I can't even see their building from there yet.
Any further questions or changes to the application?
No. So it's mostly drawing work, uh, filing the neighbors' names, some photos, um, doing this, I think, I mean, fair amount of drawing work, so, removed it. Anyway.
Um, so if you think you can, you can get the drawings fixed, um, and compile the neighbors' list, which I guess we've already done, for the seventh of November, then we can put you on the meeting, the public hearing.
Yeah, would you like me to submit the drawings ahead of time, so there's-
Sure, you can draw.
I don't wanna waste anyone, anyone's time on the seventh, so-
Yeah, drop them with Jeff and let me know, and I'll check them out, just to be sure.
Awesome, I appreciate that. Yeah, so I'll talk to Laura, we should hopefully be able to turn something around quickly.
Okay.
Great, alright, awesome.
Somebody wanna make a motion to move this to a public hearing?
Please. I move to, move this an application, uh, on Benedict, it's Benedict Street, right?
Benedict Road.
Benedict Road, uh, to a public hearing on the seventh of November.
I'll second.
Hold on a favor.
Alright, thank you very much.
Appreciate everyone's time.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you instructions on how to deal with the notifications.
Okay.
And, uh, you, you've got an extra week, so you have all of them next week to take care of it.
Okay, very good.
So don't mail anything to them.
Yeah, no, I won't, um, and then, what else, there was one other thing, uh, yeah, I know, so you'll send me the insu- the conformance, the, uh, the zoning conformance worksheet, I'll pull that off of the website. Um, I'm sure Laura has one, and figure that out. Alright, I'll submit all that stuff ahead of time, so-
Okay.
And if we're not gonna make it, I'll let you know, so you don't waste your time.
Okay.
Alright?
Thanks a lot, Jeff.
Thanks.
Good night.
Appreciate everyone's time. Thank you. Well, I got that.
Don't wanna trip and fall. First pitch. No, kidding.
What?
Yankees.
Oh.
Eight oh eight.
Alright, so at our last meeting, Bryce, we went through a bunch of those documents that we had neglected for a while, and we're down to the new conformance chart. So Eric's got a copy of that. So, um, again, the idea is to, to simplify the application process and help applicants understand what they need to do to save ourselves, um, time and to save them frustration and confusion. So we've gone through a checklist for the materials, and we've gone through, um-
Could've just given Jeff one of these, yeah.
I could have, yeah, and we've gone through the, an explanation of the process, and we've gone through, um, instructions for the public hearing, uh, the public notice instructions. So now we're down to this, and then we can put this together as a package that, um, Jeff V will send out to applicants. This draft doesn't include some of the things that came up in our email discussion, um, such as placing, moving the allowed column, so it falls between measurement and existing. And, um, adding words max and min as relevant, um, 'cause under allowed, there's numbers, but it's not clear what, um, some of them are maximums and some are minimized.
Yeah, no, that shouldn't be in there. I don't know why you're saying that we should put allowed between existing and proposed. Why are you saying that?
Um, because to establish at the start what the baseline is, what's permitted, and then, then get into the property, what's actually at the property. So first you give them, you know, the starting point, which is this is what the law, the code requires. Then we find out what, what exists, and then we find out what's proposed.
So you're not saying put a between, you're saying put allowed first, then existing, and then proposed?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there something about moving the units back to, the columns?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about it, exactly. So, and they follow the number, the units follow the numbers, so it's twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet, et cetera.
I'll also review the, the emails, sorry I missed those. I'd make the whole thing bigger too, by the way.
Yes, I'm plan, hoping that they can just get the copy from Google Sheets rather than this, but, um, we can certainly try to make it bigger.
I mean, all you have to do is, is make this two lines there, and then for the whole thing, you can get it bigger. You can knock out a bunch of columns.
With regards to like house or main structure, you think we should put the height in there? Maybe we deal with that at times, though.
Yes, it should have the height, shouldn't it? We have stories, but not height.
And, uh, last thing, uh, when people, you know, try to build a half attic, you know, or roof, uh, what the limitations are in that? Or half story?
So basically, you're talking about the, the square footage of the attic, of the second and a half floor under, under the ceiling that is greater than, what is it, five feet?
Yeah, I mean, you think there's a need to advise about that upfront, so they can get thinking about it, if that's one of their-
Well, that's why we have the codes written.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, so why, why, why overdo this, right?
Yeah.
I guess if, if they were asking for a variance for that would be the question, though. Would we wanna see that here?
But I think that then we would ask them for more than just the computation, we'd wanna see on the attic plan what the deal was.
Well, that, all this being said, if we just include some things and not all things, we have to make reference to the fact that these are just some of the variance issues presented in the code. You know, so people just don't think that this is everything.
These are the only ones, I mean, these are the most common ones for-
I mean, so we just characterize this a certain way?
I feel like we talked about that in the email at some point, too, we're talking about, just so you, saying that this is like a, something to help assist the homeowner with, right? It's not necessarily like-
Right, it doesn't include all potential variances that may be needed.
Maybe, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, what, zoning conformance worksheet for R one, for the R one residential district dash, um, area variances? Because this is for area variances. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're right, that's the way to, that's the way to state it.
What you were saying.
Would there be something in here that you put an asterisk, since we're now referencing this in area variances, that, you know, different requirements apply to lots of narrow size? And then just cite the code provision? Right, I mean, if we're getting, this is about area variances, and we do have a narrow lot exception? So that people get a heads up in advance, like, they'll say, oh, my frontage is only, you know, this broad.
Maybe we can add another section for narrow lots?
Yeah, it, it's up to you, I mean, if, if this is saying-
That does come up fairly often.
It does, actually.
And that can be, um-
And that's something that they would have to probably be more familiar with to learn about, because it's, uh, you know, we even fudge it this way and that way at times.
It's a good point.
What you're saying, um, total lot coverage, all structures, you're showing it twice, right? You're showing it under main structure and under accessory building?
Yeah, so the, the thinking for having two sections is, the variance might be only for an accessory building, or it might be only for the main structure.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's fine the way it is on that, that's-
So-
I only thought was if you just pull that, so it's like a separate line, like, so you're totaling main structure and you're totaling accessory structure, and there's, then you pull the totals to a line at the bottom.
For the lot coverage, okay, I see what you're saying.
'Cause you have lot area separately for accessory, and then you say lot area, I think you mean.
Just looking at this now, the reason why I didn't put feet, why I didn't put the units in the allowed column, is because I wanted to put the calculations right on the spreadsheet. I thought there's a way to do that, so that you can have the units there, and also-
Oh, you mean put the math in the cells of the spreadsheet?
Yeah, so somebody can just copy it and use that and then print it out. Might be pushful thinking that people do that.
Well, you can also do, right here up in all this, you can go, uh, you know, units are, are in feet. You can make the note there, and then you don't have to put it in there, but you're, you're putting it in up there.
Yeah, except some of them are percent, have stories. Look, we're talking about putting the units just in the allowed column, right? Right. So you, and you're saying you want the other cells to be, um,
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, like, for instance, like, you could put alongside allowed, and then in parentheses, feet. And so they know that if they're looking at the number, it's feet, and this way you can move all the columns that, you know, for the description of the type of area variances, move it to the left.
Yeah.
You don't have to put it together, you can just move this whole column after allowed, right?
Right.
Don't have to smoosh it together.
I'll see, I'll see what's possible, but-
But of course, you know, you have under, um, measurement on accessory building, you use the word percent twice, or you also use it in the other one, so, uh, you know, to me, it's still all fine. Uh, you know, to me, it's still all fine, I, I don't have a problem with the way it is currently.
All right, so it seems like we should not approve this yet until I make another draft of it. There are a lot of changes here. Maybe I'll send it out. I will send it out when I, when I go through it again and I'll review the, um, the email conversation we had back from whenever. Some of the notes are repetitious, they just repeat what's, um, like percent of a lot occupied by all structures. Yeah. It just repeats what, what's under measurement.
Well, sometimes people need to see it, read it two different ways to understand it. I, it doesn't hurt. It, it's not taking up a terrible amount of space.
Yeah, that's true. Height of the building. So, it's kind of basic. Okay, um, any, any additional comments here? Great, so I'll work on that.
Should we have a section on sheds?
That's the accessory building.
Oh, geez.
So to move on to the next, um, item on our agenda, the, um, the question of, uh, enforcement and the building inspector, I think everybody might have heard that the village board has decided to hire a village building inspector again and to end the agreement with the county, I mean, the town. So we'll, we'll have our own inspector and it's hope that that will improve the.
Enforcement.
Yeah, enforcement and, and response time, I guess. So with, with that said, I'm wondering if we want to, um, address anything directly to the village board. When I first brought this topic up, it seemed as though there wasn't any movement from the village board on either working with the town or to, to get, um, more, uh, inspection enforcement, nor was there, uh, an effort to hire their own inspector, so. I mean, maybe we wanna wait or maybe we wanna just alert from that we're paying attention and this is important because we're, we're doing this work and then, um, nothing's happening.
Yeah, we should do the, what do you, the latter. We should tell them, we heard that you, um, are, you, you now realize that we lost a building inspector when we joined forces with Phillips Town and, um, we didn't get, we, we lost one and so now we're getting it back and we applaud the decision because we've noticed in the last however long we've been in this joint agreement, which sounded great but didn't work, that we didn't have a building inspector, period. Thank you. Let's get a building inspector.
Okay. I, I would kind of like to, um, I don't know, maybe this doesn't need to be in, in a letter from the ZPA, but I, I really want them to understand that we've had at least three projects that we've granted variances for that now have violations.
Put it in the beginning of the letter.
Since, um, you know, during the time we've had the current.
I think we should, you could make note of it, it's fine, I mean, it's, it's a public, you know, situation, the applicant had come to us, so they opened a can of worms on it.
I mean, it'll just fuck with what they're, what we understand they're proposing to do.
Rather than just talking about the generalities, it just doesn't, you know, generalities, this is something that you can, and you, you know, you can put the timeline of when those particular applications came in.
You can even pull out the different project if you wanted to, I mean, it's fair, fair game, I mean, you know.
Well, if they're public files, it matters.
Public knowledge, you know.
And I, I have already notified Jeff of the specific projects that I'm thinking of, that's, um, uh, it's, I hope I get the numbers right. Seven, nine furnace, three furnace, and then nineteen garden street.
Let me put your, uh, hat in for the division.
Certainly not qualified, although I do ride my bike around the village. That's, uh, that's it.
Here he comes.
The front, that's the, the fence?
Yeah, so, um, so seven and nine is the fence that, um, I think that started when Bill Wojarski was the inspector. Um, they were, they had a stop work, they were told, um, to, um, they, they couldn't put up the fence. They applied for a variance, they didn't get it, they put up the fence anyway, the six foot fence. Um, they were told to remove it and they took it down, but they left up the twelve foot poles which are circling the yard or surrounding the yard, so I have mentioned that to the building inspector at least once in person and have notified Jeff of that. Also, the one at three was, um, Bill Sussman who came here and, and got variance for the fence facing, where his yard bordered the business.
Yeah.
District, and then he put a small section of six foot fence facing, um, Furnace Street, which is not facing the business district, and we did not give him a variance for that. So I don't know if that was confusion or, or what.
He was also within the side yard setback too, right?
Yes, so, so he might, you know, he might be able to get away with a few feet of six foot fence there, but certainly not all the way to the, to the property line. And then the other one, um, is nineteen garden, I think it's actually the same fence going around the backyard of the next house to the north also, and that's just a brand new six foot fence that they put up, and they were here for their addition.
The bottom line with all this conversation is that by enforcing what we, the, give with the code and how people have come before us, it makes it more likely that people will follow the code and, and, and instead of saying, I, I see this exception over here and this exception over here and. I mean, it, it's not, it's not really our position, but it'd make things probably a little easier.
Okay, so, um, I, I agree, and it's also, I mean, it'll, if you go around the village, you'll see construction going on without building permits too, which is not good, 'cause that encourages, um.
So we have to have two bicycles then?
You've got a bike.
I've got six of them.
Um, so if we, if we can, somebody will make a motion to authorize me to write this letter and then I will share, share it and we can fine tune it over email and then I'll send it.
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize the letter we've just discussed with the details that we felt might be helpful to include and with the general statement mentioned first by Donald and, you know, some specific, uh, examples to make it a little bit more, um, concrete.
Let me second the motion.
Okay, I'll on a favor?
I.
All right, okay.
Excuse me, Aaron, what were the street numbers on the two furnace streets?
Uh, I believe it's seven and nine, and I'm, I'm kind of remembering this, so I might be wrong, but I think it's seven and nine. That's the one with the fence posts.
Right.
And then the other one is three furnace.
Thank you.
I think you scrambled them to protect the innocent.
The accused.
The accused in this case.
Okay, um, and that's it. We have minutes that Jeff has, but, um, I, I didn't put them out, so we'll do, deal with those next time from our last meeting. Um, anything else? Um, thanks for the help on the, uh, the last resolution, Eric and also Donald.
Yeah.
That's going out to Jeff. Motion taken. Take a motion to return the meeting?
I second it.
On a favor?
Hi.
Thank you for your work, Aaron.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Eric and Donald.